And Kaylee, do we have our green light yet? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the joint North Bend City Council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session Agenda for Monday, June 21st, 2021 at 4:30 PM here in the council chambers. Good afternoon. Number two on our agenda tonight is we have a presentation from our Eagle Scout project in Simpson Park, and I believe Madden Robertson is going to be giving the presentation. Our Parks Director, Brian Owens, I believe is going to give an introduction.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A while back, this young gentleman approached me at the parks and decided that he wanted to do an Eagle Scout project. We've done three of them already, and it's really beneficial to our community. They do some great things. The trails, both trails were through Eagle Scouts. And what he's going to do is Madden Robertson, he's going to, Robertson, he's going to explain his project, which is part of the process for his Eagle Scout project. So Madden, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hello. Good evening. As he said, I'm Madden Robertson. I'm Life Scout and Senior Patrol Leader of Scout Troop 156. And I'm working on my Eagle at Simpson Park. What my current plan is for my project is I'll be working together with my troop. And well, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to clear out an area over by the basketball court, the stairs near the tennis court. And we are going to create a kind of picnic and recreation, recreation area. And so after we remove brush around there, any ivy, blackberry, we're going to add a picnic table and two benches. And so that'll, that'll add an area for, to get people up there and a viewing area and get rid of all the brush and invasive species up there.
We've been very excited to get this project going because it's something that has always been, we've got a new playground, we're creating a new environment for the park. And I think that once he's done with his project, it's really going to highlight the park area. So I'm real excited to be working with him. We've met various times. And he's very, very proactive in making sure that it looks really, really nice for the citizens of North Bend. If you have any questions.
Is this just like west of the new playground?
Correct. Right there on that hillside there, there's already a flat spot there.
Yeah, right between the basketball court and the tennis court.
And it's actually right next to the other Eagle Scout project for the stairs that already go out towards McPherson. Any more questions?
Is it at the top of the stairs?
No, it'll be just right off the basketball court.
Okay.
Probably about 20 feet from the basketball court. It's not going to be up above.
More accessible.
Right.
Sounds nice.
Yes.
I'm glad to see scouting still going there. I'm actually going up Friday to shoot at the Boy Scout shoot in Cottage Grove. And I don't know what Eugene Chapter puts that on, but it went for a year or so without having that. And I'm glad to see everything going back to, you know, doing things.
So you have a nice detailed scope of work here that I have in front of me. I think all the other councilors have it as well. And I see in here that you need someone from the Parks Department to operate the backhoe and an adult to operate the saw. I imagine our superintendent has worked out the details and all that with you. Yeah.
We have a couple stumps that have been in there a long time that are kind of just in the bank there. We're just going to remove those stumps for him. So, and we've got some other plans that he's probably got in his drawing, but we're hopefully getting this project started soon.
Yes, hopefully as soon as, just, I just mailed out my proposal in order for it to get reviewed. And I can't actually work on fundraising or work on the actual project until after I get that approved. So as soon as that's approved, I'm planning on working on it.
Yeah. Did I see, did I see the number 350 or total cost $400 is what you would need to fundraise?
Yeah. Oh, is that, I updated it earlier. It'll probably be more, like 500 or so.
Okay, I have the second copy here, I think. Yes. Good.
We have some old picnic tables that need to be rebuilt. So we're going to put one of the tables up there and they'll rebuild it, but they'll supply the benches and build the benches up there.
So the process is then, as you work with our superintendent, you still go through the process to get your, to get it approved through your scout? And then once you get the green light, you'd be able to proceed?
Yeah.
And then how long do you think the project will take?
I'm not exactly sure. At least a few weekends, probably. I'm, my plan is to get it done by late August.
Does any of the other councilors have any more questions?
Just one. Do we have to, seeing some of working with Ferry Road on the arrectal vertical portion, is there going to be anything that has to be looked at over there?
We always, whenever we're working the parks, the SHPO and the tribal inquiries are always done.
Right.
He also moves through the administrative process of the volunteer management program. So there's several procedural steps. Tonight is its opportunity to present the plan to you all and then administratively hand off to us.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This sounds like a really interesting project, and we really appreciate you wanting to do something and give back to the city of North Bend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. That takes us to number three on our agenda tonight. We have a training. The city and county insurance services, also known as CIS, is going to be giving us, providing us some training. We have a presenter here this evening, and I believe our city administrator will introduce her.
I think we'll be okay with other shoes after. You want me to go ahead? If, I hope it's okay that I stand sitting. I have to move around.
Do we need to close the back, the door just so we can hear a little bit better?
Thank you.
And is it going to be loaded here? Oh, it's going to be loaded everywhere.
And just so you know, before you begin, we do have one counselor on Zoom as well.
On Zoom?
Yeah. So he will not see you.
He sees you there, so he'll just follow you.
Okay. Right by that screen. This one. Ah ha, there we are. All right. Are we good? All right. Good evening, Council, and I think maybe department head staff? That's, that's my guess. Through years and years of doing city council meetings in Redmond, I figure the people who are left in the audience are probably department heads. So that's just the way it goes. Tomorrow, we're going to do this training with staff, so we're going to go a little bit deeper. But we do like to do a version for our elected officials because elected officials are obviously part of our organization and represent the city. And therefore, when we are acting in capacity in our role, the behaviors that we do as acting in capacity of our role, obviously can have an effect, especially when it comes to topics such as this, which is harassment discrimination. And we're going to talk a little bit about unconscious bias. So I like to call it red light, yellow light, green light. Where, where?
Is it down below?
There we go. Okay, so red light, yellow light, green light. Red light is the illegal discrimination, and yellow light is kind of where most of us live every day, kind of, you know, is it okay, is it not okay? You know, it's just kind of how I view the world, so is anything wrong with what I'm saying? And then green light, of course, is how we would like people to act while we are in the workforce. Okay, so we have legal reasons for being trained, right? The organization, the city of North Bend as an organization, is legally responsible for the acts of our staff, our coworkers, our elected officials when we're working on behalf of the city. And when we wear our hat as an elected official, it's pretty hard in the community to take the hat off, right? I mean, the community elected you, and so the community, when they look at you, when they hear you speaking, it's pretty hard to separate being that counselor than being just the citizen. Okay, so we are responsible for the actions. What, what is happening? What are we saying? What are we talking about? So I like to talk a little bit about today's workforce, or really just us as unique individuals today. We are all different. I really don't know where I'm clicking.
Just let me know.
Okay. All right. So I want to use the word diversity in a different way, kind of an alternative definition. Diversity is who we are as a unique individual, right? Where you were born. Were you born here in, you know, in North Bend or in Coos County? Were you born in Oregon at all? I'm an Oregonian. I'm a multi-generation Oregonian. Where we born, you know, maybe not in Oregon at all. Maybe we're from the Midwest or back east or down south. So where were we raised? When were we raised? Which generation are we from? We talk a lot about generational training, right? Are you a baby boomer or a Gen X or a millennial or a Gen Z? So the period of time that we were raised has a huge influence on how we see the world, right? Because our experiences. And then were we in a small town, big city? So again, what were the influences that raised us? How were we raised? Rich, poor, middle class, two parents, one parent? Was religion important? Or were you, you know, the family that went to church every Sunday or not? So all of these components have helped form your view on the world, on just about everything, right? We're going to talk about conscious and unconscious bias in a little bit. So are who we are as that unique individual is who comes to work every day at the city of North Bend if you're an employee? Or wherever you work as counselors or retired or whatever you do in your life? You bring yourself to the role. You bring yourself to the role of city counselor. And none of us are the same, right? Because we were all raised a little bit different. So quickly, the role of the city council? Go ahead. What is the role of the city council? Well, you, as city council, your role is to manage the city manager. That is your, that is your employee, the city manager, right? And as a member of the city council, you should be familiar with policies that, of course, were established by the council as it relates to the work that the city council or the city manager should do. So the city manager's authority, okay? Your job is to review the performance of the city manager, okay? And you are chartered with maintaining a relationship with the city manager, okay? And of course, then your job also is to follow the city charter. So staff works through the city manager. City manager reports to city council. If city council have questions about staff, it goes through the city manager. City manager goes back and talks to staff, right? So especially when we're in smaller communities where everybody maybe knows everybody, everybody grew up together, you know, and we already have relationships long before people became city council members, it's sometimes kind of hard not to just go directly to the person that we want to go talk to, right? Directly, because it's much easier. But once we put that hat on as that city counselor, we have to remember that we have power. We have power in our title. We have power by being a city council member. Okay, so all of a sudden, your role has changed. Your role has changed with members of staff. Maybe that were your neighbor or your friends before. Once you become that city counselor, that hat has changed. And sometimes that's a really hard thing to kind of think about. It's like, oh, I've known this person my whole life. Maybe I went to school with this person or, you know, go to church with this person or this person, you know, our kids go to school, whatever. And, you know, we're just talking. You know, we're just talking about things. Well, when we're talking about city business, we have to remember our role. Our role is to work as a unit, as a city council unit, and to remember what our processes are. So let's dive into red light behavior. And this is that illegal discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Next slide. So very quickly, I'm not going to go in too much depth here. I'll go much deeper when I talk to staff. But basically, we have both Oregon and federal discrimination categories. For many in Oregon, the federal, they are the same. Oregon has a few more. But basically, we are all protected as unique individuals by our race, by our religion, by the color of our skin, by our national origin, which is where our families came from, okay? Our age, if you're female, pregnancy has quite a bit of protection, especially jaw protection. We are protected by our sex, our sexual orientation, our gender. So these are all protected classes. Next slide. So you can see, this is really hard to read. And the reason why it's hard to read is to show you just how many protected classes are out there. So there's quite a few, okay? And so managers especially say, well, if I can't read them all, how do I know if I am doing something wrong? Well, if, as good managers and good stewards of our departments, if we're always treating an employee, okay, with dignity and respect and following personnel policy and rules, okay? We are going to be in a much better position from crossing the line into treating an individual in a potential discriminatory way, okay? So we have all of these protections. And an employer may not act against an employee based on their race, their religion, their national origin, their sexual orientation, et cetera. When we act in that behalf, we may be crossing the line into discrimination. So, next slide. So quickly, what is unlawful discrimination? Well, it's to treat someone different because of one of those protected classes, okay? It can be harassment. It can be sexual harassment. It can be retaliation. So let's talk just quickly about some of this. How can this happen? As you see from this little slide, it can happen multiple ways. An employee can harass an employee, okay? A member of the public can harass an employee. Elected official can harass an employee. An employee can harass, supervisors can harass employees or lower level staff, members that they manage. So it happens in many different ways. But depending on your role, depends on how we handle the situation, right? So if it's staff, we of course have a potential employment claim, okay? If the public is harassing you, the city council, you're not employees. So you have a completely different avenue that you go through, all right? But if a member of the public body harasses an employee, discriminates an employee, now we're about to employment, okay? Because we're looking at what is happening to the employee. So we follow that relationship when we are looking at what kind of claims happen, okay? So next slide. Oh, we already did this. So what's a hostile work environment? Why don't you go ahead and just load this slide up? So, there you go. So the funny thing about hostile work environment is this is a very, very common phrase that people use. When people are often in a situation that is uncomfortable for them, they sometimes say, I'm working in a hostile work environment. Or if they have a boss who's more like a bully, maybe they have a boss that just yells all the time or is grumpy all the time, comes in and slams door. Really bad environment to work in, but that's not necessarily hostile. That's just a really bad work environment because nothing illegal is going on. Slamming a door is not illegal. Again, probably an environment I don't want to work in because it's very uncomfortable, okay? But it's not hostile. In order for it to be a hostile work environment, something illegal has to be going on. So the law says, look, we're not a civility code. We know sometimes things happen at work. But what we're really looking for is, is the conduct so objectively offensive that it has altered the working environment toward the employee? Okay? That's what we're looking at. Next slide. The conduct also that is going on has to be substantial and pervasive. So it has to happen more than one time. If somebody one time says an inappropriate joke, okay? As an employer, we're going to discipline that employee for saying that inappropriate joke. But one joke one time probably is not going to create a hostile work environment for the employee, right? But definitely, under our policies and under North Bend's policies, it's not okay. So we would certainly discipline that employee for saying that joke. But it's probably not going to like rise to the legal level of a hostile work environment, okay? So what we have to remember is, again, because there's not a civility code, here's the problem with this. An employee says an inappropriate joke, they get away with it. They say another inappropriate joke, they get away with it. When, when is enough enough? When does it cross the line into a hostile work environment? The problem is, it's usually in the eye of the receiver. It's the person that the conduct is happening to. They're the one that's usually going to decide when enough is enough, okay? So if we don't tackle inappropriate conduct right when it happens, it might get away from us. And then, again, if it happens pervasively, severely, it keeps going, now we're like, hey, now we have a hostile work environment because this keeps happening to me and it has affected my work environment, okay? So racial harassment, this is using derogatory names, ethnic slurs, jokes, talking about people's ethnicity kind of in a bucket, like saying, well, let me give you an example. I worked with a public works supervisor or an HR person whose public works supervisor came into her because she was hiring some temporaries for seasonal. And he said, hey, you know, hire some people who are Hispanic. They're really, really good at maintenance and lawn care. I mean, they're really good at, they'll do the work. Okay? That person may have not have thought he was saying anything wrong or illegal, but again, it's putting a cultural and ethnic group in a box and saying, oh, Hispanics are really good at lawn care. Okay? So we have to be careful when we use verbiage, that we are not putting people in a bucket and talking about a different ethnicity or any ethnicity in a kind of a very general way, okay? And again, I go back to how we were raised, when we were raised. Because again, some people might go, well, what's wrong with what I just said? You know, I mean, I wasn't saying anything rude. Somebody might say it's true, you know? Everybody in my neighborhood who does lawn care are Hispanic. So what's wrong with what I just said? Okay? So we have to make sure we are not stereotyping, okay? When it comes to jokes, I like to tell especially staff that if the joke is so funny, you're going to have no problem coming to HR or to the city manager or to your boss to share that joke, okay? If you tell the joke because you want a reaction, which is what some people like to do, some people think they're the funny person, right, on staff, then the joke's probably inappropriate. And it's probably a joke that we don't want to be bringing to work. Want to talk quickly about sexual orientation harassment. So sexual orientation has actually been a protected class in the state of Oregon since 2008. So it's not a new protection on the books. It's been around since 2008 on Oregon books, okay? And all this means is that you are protected by your orientation, your sexual orientation, whether that be gay, straight, bisexual, pansexual, whatever your sexual orientation is, okay? So what is sexual orientation? It simply means who you are sexually or emotionally attracted to, okay? And for some people, that can be more than one category, okay? So that's sexual orientation. How do we harass someone? Well, maybe we harass someone, maybe we make jokes, maybe we are being funny, we think we're being funny by making comments about somebody's mannerisms or their voice and fluctuations or maybe how they walk, okay? Or making fun or asking inappropriate questions about sexual activity, okay? We don't want to know anything about somebody's sexual activity nor should we be asking about somebody's sexual orientation or activity, nor should we be getting into somebody's sexual activity. It's really inappropriate and it is not for public organizational conversation, okay? Gender expression or gender identity, two different things. Gender expression is how someone expresses themselves. So this might be the clothes that they wear, okay? It might be how they style their hair. It might be how they wear makeup. It might be their mannerisms. So it's how someone chooses to express themselves. Years ago, at the city of Silverton, that mayor, his name was Stu, if anyone had been in public service for a long time, Stu was the mayor, and he came to city council meetings in his nylons and his heels and, and his jewelry on. That was his expression, okay? How he expressed himself. Gender identity is how somebody feels on the inside. So you may have heard about different pronouns, pronoun identity, right? Someone who uses a pronoun different than the sex, the gender of their birth. So if you were born a female, your natural pronouns are she or her, okay? A male, he, yeah. And the individual may say, I do not identify with the gender of my birth, so my pronouns are non-gender. They, they're them. Okay, there's a whole list of them, C's, E's, N, okay? So this is where somebody says, I do not identify with the gender of my birth and therefore I am living my life gender neutral. Some of these people will also change their name, okay? So if you have a staff member who changes their name, you change their name, okay? We don't say, oh, nope, nope, sorry, in our, in our system, your legal name is the only thing that could be in the system. We change the name, okay? It's actually illegal in the state of Oregon to say, nope, sorry, not going to call you the name that you have given yourself or that you've changed your name to. Or, I'm sorry, I just can't get on board with all of these different pronouns. It's just all interesting to me and I just can't get on board with that. So I'm just, I'm just going to call you the way I call you, okay? Potentially, this could be harassment, right? The other thing about gender expression that I want to say is, in society, we have been raised in a society where we've been taught that there's only two genders. And so we see evidence of that throughout society. If you go into a store to buy clothes, you see the girls' clothes on one side of the store, well, we have most of it at the store. And then over here is the men's department and you get just this amount over here, okay? I mean, that's what society has taught us through the years, is that we have males and we have females. And males look a certain way and females look a certain way. So when you have someone who is not conforming to society, it may make some people uncomfortable and then people go kind of to their shield and they're like, well, this is uncomfortable for me, okay? So I'm having a hard time with this. We have a legal obligation to treat everyone with dignity and respect and to treat them with how they view themselves, both in employment and in the public. So when you're looking at, as a city council, you're charged with passing a lot of things. You probably have complaints, transportation plans, okay? So looking at your plans that you're passing, you know, are we treating our public equally as we are passing things? What verbiage are we using, right? So things to start to think about. Next slide. Let's talk a little bit about sexual harassment. So oftentimes when I say that we're going to talk about harassment, this is exactly what everybody thinks the whole class is all about, is sexual harassment. The funny thing, I've been doing HR for 35 years and I've been talking about sexual harassment since about 1991, when we have the Nita Hill hearing, when Clarence Thomas was put on the bench and Nita Hill, you know, for the, one of the first times was very public. You know, we never saw that before and we certainly didn't see it televised. And then all of a sudden, 1991, all of those in HR start, had, start training on this. And what we trained about was quid pro quo sexual harassment, which was the management or the person of power having that power over the subordinate, okay? So quid pro quo sexual harassment is the person of power saying something like, you know, you get to keep your job or I'll give you a bonus or I'll give you a raise if you give me some kind of sexual favor, okay? So it was, it's a this for that, a quid pro quo. So it was, it's a this for that, a quid pro quo. When I talked before about hostile work environment and I said oftentimes there needs to be more than one incident, this is a time that we don't need multiple incidents, okay? This is one time. One time can get us in trouble here, okay? So sexual harassment, we take very, very seriously. One can be enough. The thing again about sexual harassment is it all depends on our view of sexual harassment. Let's get the next slide up. So sexual harassment can be a hostile work environment if someone is trying to advance a sexual favor to someone or ask for a sexual favor, okay? Again, if you are the person of power, it can become sexual harassment very quickly because the person of power in that quid pro quo scenario and the subordinate, okay? Subordinate feels like they need to oblige the person of power, okay? But it doesn't have to just be the quid pro quo situation. It can be coworker to coworker. Funny thing during this pandemic, when we thought everybody was working at home, well, we had a lot of people working in offices and I'm not sure what's been going on with the pictures on the cell phones. Pictures, thousand words there. Take a picture of yourself, send it to a coworker, we have sexual harassment. And for some reason, at CIS, we've had a lot of cases lately where people have been taking pictures of themselves and sending it to a coworker, thinking they're funny or whatever, I'm not exactly sure. But taking a picture and sending it, whether it's on the city phone, your personal phone to a coworker and it's sexual in nature, sexual harassment. Yes, you wouldn't believe. And these all, of course, investigated immediately. And I'm just going to let you all know, these are pictures that we really don't want to see, okay? But it can be, again, female to male. We have females sending the pictures to males, it can be male to female, it can be same gender and has nothing to do with being sexually attractive to someone. Some people just think they're funny, okay? Some people just think they're funny. So we have to remember that any kind of unwanted conduct in a sexual way can become sexual harassment. Again, it's not the person who gets to decide who's delivering the message, it's the person receiving the message. That's the person that's deciding if what just happened is uncomfortable or has just crossed the line, the receiver. And then, of course, the person who did the conduct. I don't think I've ever sat with an employee, especially in an investigation, and they told me, oh Sharon, you know, I was just goofing off, I was just kidding around, I didn't really mean anything. And when I said, okay, well then let's just go back to work. It's like, no, we have a complaint and we actually have to investigate and take a look at this. So these are very, very serious situations. But again, oftentimes it's the person doing it that says, I didn't mean it. They took it out of context. And so what we just have to remember is because we are all different people, because we are all unique, we have to be very careful with the message that we deliver. And if it could potentially be outside of the professional boundaries of work, we have to be careful of how the conduct might be received. And especially if it's around the lines of sexual or racial. What did I say? How could it be construed by somebody else? And have I just crossed the line? The other thing we have to remember about this, again, is we know different generations view sexual harassment very differently. There was a study done amongst public workers, I think it was at the federal level, where there was all sorts of questions that said, you know, is this sexual harassment? And we had the younger generation, the Z generation marked all of them. Yes, they were all sexual harassment. And we had the baby boomers and the traditionalists that marked like four of them. And they're like, huh, you know, I don't think so. So we don't all see it the same way. If we did, this would be so much easier to tackle, but we don't. So again, always having to put in play, how could somebody else receive my conduct? Next. Yeah, different people view things differently. Oh, the Me Too movement, you know? Funny thing about that Me Too movement, it got people talking. So one thing about that generation, bringing up the Me Too movement, some people said, hey, that happened seven, 10, 15 years ago. Why are you bringing this up now? Or how could somebody bring that up now? Well, it's because if you are the victim, many people don't speak up. They can't speak up, they're afraid to speak up, okay? They're afraid of retaliation. They're afraid of losing their job, et cetera, okay? So actually, Oregon law changed their harassment law as of 2020 and now we have a five-year statute of limitations on this kind of conduct instead of one. So somebody, now, do you remember what you had for breakfast three days ago? Maybe some of you remember, some of you don't. Are you going to remember what conduct happened two, three, four years ago? Okay, the claim comes in five years? Yeah, we got to defend ourselves. We have to remember what conduct happened. So again, if we go back to, I don't even know what I did. I didn't think it was that big of a deal. This is getting farther and farther out there. So again, have to remember, when we have our hat on, especially for you city councilors, staff will talk about it tomorrow, when you're wearing your hat, you have to remember, how are you being perceived? Have we crossed the line? The fact of the matter is, if you're working with city staff, if you're working as a member of the council, you're talking about city business, your hat's on. Pretty hard to take the hat off, okay? Pretty hard to take the hat off. So we have to remember how our conduct is being viewed. Next question. Okay, yellow light. Is yellow light behavior okay? Next slide. So I put a slide on bullying in here because bullying, again, is very generational. Some of the older generations are like, ah, bullying, you know, just toughen up. I mean, people are so sensitive today, you know? I mean, you know, when I started my career, people were very aggressive and now everybody's so sensitive anymore. Well, the fact of the matter is, again, how we perceive conduct. So bullying behavior could be supervisor to an employee, but it can also be employee to an employee. So it's usually repeated unwanted actions, okay? Sometimes it's a group of people directed at one person. Sometimes it's a person directed just at one person, okay? Doesn't always have to be a group. Sometimes the reason for the action is that there is some intent there. They want to humiliate the person, they want to intimidate the person. Sometimes it's because we're anxious about that person. Maybe the person's doing really, really well in the job and now we're threatened by them, you know, because they might get the promotion and you might not get the promotion and so people start to bully people. When I ask about bullying, especially when we talk with staff, I ask people, you know, have you ever participated in bullying behavior? And most people go, oh, no, 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 I would never bully anyone. I'm like, oh, ever had water talk and throw a coworker under the bus? Well, let's just have water talk, cooler talk. That's a form of bullying. If we are trying to cut another employee down, okay? It's a form of bullying. Why are we having this conversation? Who are we having this conversation with? What's the concept of the conversation? What's the why of the conversation? So bullying is, you know, when I think about bullying, when we started to add this to the train, I thought about junior high, you know, and the big kid that was always in the characters in the comics about being the bully. No, bully can be anybody. The bully can be anybody. Next. Let's move that up. So bias. So we all have bias, okay? How our brain works, okay? We have positive and negative bias or affirmative and negative bias, okay? Bias helps us make decisions, right? So when you were a young child, you were raised in your household and by conversations that happened in your household, you formed opinion, right? You didn't really think about the opinion you're forming. You just formed opinion based on how your parents raised you, okay? So in that opinion, you have formed a bias. Biases help us navigate life. We know what we like and we know what we don't like, right? That's bias, okay? Again, it helps us make decisions. So bias can be very, very good. Bias can be bad when we are using our bias in a negative way in employment, okay? We don't like someone, so we don't want to add them onto our team. Or if we're doing interview and we see the applicant for the first time and they walk in the room and we don't like the way they look. So we might have a bias against different nationalities or race and we see somebody walk in, it's like, oh, I don't want that person on my team, okay? That's that bias, you really don't have to think about it, it just comes out because that's your formed bias that formed when you were a child through the years, okay? So that's an unconscious bias, it happens in a split second, okay? The funny thing about the unconscious bias is it's often incompatible with conscious values that you may have. You may say that you have a conscious value of respect, that you respect everyone. But if we really get into it, you know, do we really respect everyone? Well, people start talking about other people and it's like, well, you know, I don't understand, I don't like people from X country or I don't like people of that religion. Or the big one now, I don't like people of that political party or that political party. So do we really respect everyone? Again, naturally, we have formed biases, okay? But again, when it comes to unemployment, when it comes to being a city counselor, we have to be careful if our bias is triggering a decision that we are making. So we always check ourselves. Why are we making this decision? Is there any bias involved, okay? Is it about someone or it's about something? Am I making the decision because I like that employee or I don't like that employee? And so I'm going to make an opposite decision, okay? So how are we making, especially employment decisions? Are we allowing our bias to trigger a positive or negative response? So microaggressions. So this is, I think you started to hear about the microaggressions, very popular now. All these buzzwords, right? And so, oh, microaggressions is what we're talking about. So what is it? Well, it's basically everyday verbal or nonverbal slight snubs, insults, and it communicates a hostile or derogatory message, okay? From a non-marginalized or a dominant group in society towards someone who is marginalized, okay? A group of people, an individual who is marginalized, again, because of who they are. So just saying, in society in Oregon, just Oregon data, is, you know, we're 87, almost 88% white in the state of Oregon. If I looked at your county, you're probably close to those numbers as well, pretty high, okay? That's just Oregon. So if you are white, you're the majority in Oregon. So you're not marginalized because you're the majority, okay? So certain things don't affect you certain ways if you're white. So if you make a comment about a group that is marginalized, so the group that's in the minority, there's a lot of weight to that conversation or to that statement just again because of who you are, okay? So, next slide. So to help people kind of understand this definition of microaggression, I've changed it to subtle acts of exclusion because I think it helps people get their arms around a little bit better. So they're usually very subtle comments or actions. Most people aren't thinking about what they're saying or doing, it just kind of happens, okay? It can be something that you say or do. But that statement or action can be very exclusive if you're on the receiving end, okay? But again, the person saying it is like, well, what was the big deal? I mean, it wasn't that bad, you know? It's like, just talking in general. This is again where we talk especially very general about someone. So next slide, here's some examples for you. Everyone knows Asians are smart. So this example comes from Bend, where I live over in central Oregon. Phil over, hers this morning, here. 90 degrees in Eugene, very comfortable once I hit the 60-something, woo! So in Bend, we have three high schools. Bend High, Summit and Mountain View. And in 2019, they didn't do it last year because of COVID and they didn't do it again this year. But they always interview the valedictorians of the high schools at one of the TV stations. And in 2019, the valedictorian from Summit High School is Asian. And this person's interviewing him and like, you know, of course, usually the interview's about where you're going, you know, what you're going to be in life, et cetera, et cetera. And this lady started to talk about the microaggressions that happened at the high school, about how her friends and fellow students would say things to her like, well, of course you're the valedictorian, you're Asian and everyone knows Asians are smart. You got the smart brain. You know, I'm white, I had to really study hard at microbiology, et cetera, you know, AP physics. It probably just came natural to you because you're Asian, okay? That's a microaggression, okay? If you're white and you're not Asian and you make a comment about Asians as a group, again, an individual might say, what's the big deal? Well, you've marginalized a group of people, you've put them into a bucket. Here's the next one. The girls in the office, I get this one all the time. The girls in the office, okay? The girls, what's the definition of a girl? Someone under the age of 18, a minor, yeah, that's a girl, okay? Once you're over 18, not a little girl anymore, okay? But very common do I hear the comments of, go talk to the girls in the office. It de-minimizes their professionalism, okay? I don't care what your role is at the city of North Bend. We're all professionals at what we do and no one should be marginalized, okay? Now, I hear in comparison to this, a lot of people would say, well Sharon, I hear everybody say, go talk to the guys, okay? Guys, believe it or not, this may not seem fair, is acceptable because it's actually been adopted as a unisex term. People are saying guys for both guys and gals. So they're saying guys in a general statement, okay? If a man, an older man or a man says, go talk to the girls, here's your majority, okay? Here's the minority, it de-minimizes that group of individuals. But this is probably one of the most common ones I hear. And then people are like, oh, I think I say that. Okay, sure, many of us say microaggressions. So this is to start saying, oh, do I say that? And who am I saying it to? And gee, now that I know, maybe I pay attention to that. Maybe I didn't realize what was being said because that's the whole idea about microaggressions is to help people identify what they are and if you're saying it, how do we help fix it? How do we get something else stuck in your brain instead of a microaggression? So here's the next one. Slang. Slang that's in trouble. So slang happens out there in society, okay? You start hearing slang going on and at some point we adopt it. Comes in one ear and starts coming out our mouth. And we don't know why we fixed it up. Over in Bend, I don't know for how many years, it was, it's all good. I think I heard it's all good at every store, everything you went into. It was like, oh, it's so good, no worries, it's all good. That was constant, okay? I don't care where you went. Wasn't that many years ago that the slang, oh, that's so gay, was very popular? Anybody remember that expression? Oh, that's so gay. Yeah, it was, again, it was very, very fluent conversation and people would use that expression. When you used that expression, you were using it in a, oh, that's so gay. If you took gay out and you put a different word in, it would be, oh, that's so gross. Oh, that's so yucky. That's how we used, oh, that's so gay. It wasn't used in a positive way, it was in a, ugh, icky way. So imagine being gay. If you're saying, oh, that's so gay, you're probably not gay, right? I mean, again, we often don't use microaggressions if they affect us. We use microaggressions that affect a different group of people and usually a group that is marginalized, okay? That is in the minority. So, next slide. So when we think about microaggressions, when we think about bias, when we think about yellow light conduct, we all do it, none of us are perfect. Our job is to help each other when we hear someone say something that could be microaggressive or if our unconscious bias is coming out in a negative way that can affect an employee's specialty employment relationship, whether it be hiring, firing, discipline, et cetera. We need to help each other because none of us are perfect and our job is to say, do you realize what you just said? Can I help you with that? Are you aware, are you aware that the decision might have some undertone? Are you aware that comment could be construed different? We have an obligation to help each other because again, we're all different. We have an obligation to help each other, because again, we're all different. And we may be coming from a mindset that says, what's the big deal? Okay, what's the big deal? It's not that big of a deal, it is for the receiver. Okay, and we don't get to decide how the receiver receives our, our, our comments and our expressions. So our policies, very important even for council. You should know what the discrimination harassment policies are at the city of Bend. Uh, funny thing about every time the Oregon is in the legislature, new employment laws happen, over and over and over again. We've got new ones coming up here. In fact, there's a new one that just passed about hair, hairstyles. Okay, yeah, no more discriminating against people's hairstyles. Okay, uh, so there's, uh, three or four of them that are, that are coming up. In two thousand twenty, Oregon passed a new pregnancy disability law, passed new harassment law, like I said. Uh, now five years statute of limitations instead of one. So council, you also need to be aware of these policies, because an employee has the right to go to whoever they feel comfortable with to bring a claim forward. Now, council, if a member of staff comes to you, you take it to the city manager. Okay, because again, you need to funnel through the city manager. If it's the city manager, well, then it comes to the council, because that's, that's your boss, and I'm assuming you will then work with your city attorney. Are you the city attorney?
I am.
All right, there she is, right there. Next slide. So this is the Workplace Protection Act of January two thousand twenty. It expanded the law for harassment. Okay, again, from one year to five years. We have to be very careful, and anytime somebody brings a potential claim, of course, claims aren't right away, somebody brings a complaint forward, we have a legal obligation to investigate, right? We don't get to decide, this is why we don't let our bias come in and say, oh, that's just Stan, you know, that's just who he is, you know, don't worry about it, he's just rough around the edges. No, we don't get to do that. Or we don't get to say, oh, you know, I don't really think that's harassment, we'll let it go, because it didn't hit these marks. No, we have an obligation to investigate the conduct. Next slide. So, yes, the complaint comes in, comes to the city manager, comes to HR, comes to the city attorney. If it comes to council, council, take it to the city manager. Okay, we do not want you deliberating amongst yourselves about this. So these are things that we don't want you to share. We want, oh, we need to take you over here. Okay, that's where we want that comment to go. Okay, because we don't want for it to get out, we have to investigate, right? And investigation is not your role. It's going to come over here. Okay. So, city, of course, is going to take all things very seriously. They're going to interview, they're going to investigate, they're going to talk to people. Um, they are going to get any kind of documents that are needed to be collected. Sometimes that's where those pictures come in handy, on phones, or any kind of emails, et cetera. The content is going to come in, and then there will be a decision, there will be a written decision. Okay, and the decision is going to be, of course, based on what we learn, but the result is going to be, again, what we have learned. And the law says, employer, you have a legal obligation to make sure your work environment is free from any kind of harassment, discrimination, or retaliation. So if we find this, we must tackle this. And we must bring the appropriate discipline down for some people, or for some actions, what we learn. That conduct may be, um, a warning for some people, it may be firing that person. This can be very difficult, especially if it's that employee that you really, really like, or you really, really need. And then that's when we start making concessions. We start saying, oh, well, you know, maybe it wasn't as bad as we really think it is. You know, we really need that employee. It's when we start making concessions. But the law says, employer, we need to make sure this never happens again. And so, again, for some situations, it's, it's a, it may be a firing offense. Click. So, you as an elected official, okay? We need to be, we need to be familiar with the fact that we have all of these different categories. We have race, we have religion. Talking with these things on for a long time. Excuse me, I apologize. We have race, we have religion, we have sexual orientation, we have gender, we have, uh, national, um, orientation, we have, um, pregnancy, we have all these protected classes. Okay, so as an elected official, you need to know that, again, if somebody comes to you and is saying, this has happened to me, or this, I, this conduct, we need to take it seriously. And we do not say, oh, that's just Stan, oh, that's just Mary, they're so sensitive, or it's not that big of a deal, or, you know, we've heard about this conduct before and it didn't go anywhere. I've heard that one a number of times. Oh, we had something similar to this and it didn't go anywhere. Well, every situation is different, so we must investigate. Okay, so we have to know when a concern is coming to us, what we do with it. Under that two thousand twenty rule, that two thousand twenty law, every employer must identify at least two individuals who are trained to receive complaints. So usually, it's the city manager and HR. Um, we don't want to name names in our policy, but we do want to name positions. That doesn't mean those are the only positions city staff can go to. City staff may still go to any supervisor or manager that they feel comfortable with. But before the two thousand twenty version, it was go to any supervisor and manager, and so staff was going to supervisors or managers, and that supervisor or manager was like, they, they didn't know that they were receiving a complaint, and so they weren't doing anything with it. And so things were not being investigated. So Oregon comes out and says, okay, still can go to any supervisor or manager, but at least two people in the organization need to know how to at least receive the complaint, and then make sure it, it moves forward. Okay, so we often think things are just rumors. We have a legal obligation to address it. Next slide. Okay, especially for you, city council, confidentiality is critical. Okay, um, we have an obligation to keep these things confidential. Personnel matters are confidential. People say, well, everything the employee does is public, not quite. Um, there are certain things in employees' personnel file that is public. However, certain things are not public. And certainly, when we are in the middle of investigating a concern or a potential complaint, we need to make sure that we are treating everybody with dignity and respect, and that we are keeping it confidential. So again, councillors, remember that you've got your hat on as a city councillor, and direct any concerns that you receive to the city manager. We do not want the foot and mouth consequence. Okay, next slide. Yeah, okay, quickly, these are how, again, city councillors can get in trouble. Okay, um, using, obviously, your office for personal gain is a no-no. Actually, for any public employee, using their position for personal gain is inappropriate. Using tools of the city that they don't personally own at home is inappropriate. Uh, you can't use the city pickup truck to go get your personal mark desk to take it to your house, because you don't have a pickup, right? Um, city councillors, you too, you can't be directing staff to do something on your benefit, on your behalf, right? You can't tell the public works guy to go get that pickup truck and, while they're going back to the yard, swing by and dump some stuff up in your house, because you don't have a pickup truck, can't be doing that, right? Uh, that should say city policies, not county policies. Fail to follow, of course, city policies. Um, of course, meeting laws, um, making sure that you are following your, your charter and your, um, council meeting laws. Employment decisions, again, you have one employee, right? Are you an employer or are you on contract?
We're contracted.
You're on contract, so your one employee is the city manager, right? Yeah, that's your employee. So you don't get to make other employment decisions. Now, for certain department head positions, sometimes councils like to give their two cents. But again, you have one employee, and the rest of the employees report to the city manager. So again, it seems like it's such a simple tree, but it can get so convoluted, right? And again, I think it's because a lot of people, you know, we've known each other for so long, and we have relationships with people. Or, you know, you have all these commissions and committees, and so, you know, certain staff will probably work with more, you know, especially like when you get to planning commission meetings, and might, might work more with the planning department. So we get familiar or uncomfortable. And then it's kind of easy to skirt around and say, oh, I just had a question. Or, you know, I know this person who would be great for this job. And so I know you have an opening on your team. You know, how can I help that person get a job? Okay, we have to be careful that we are not allowing that to happen, because remember, you have to have your city council hat on. Okay. So, um, common claims against public officials, more of this. Um, so this is where I'm going to bring this hostile work environment back out. Okay, um, again, in order for something to be a hostile work environment, an action to the individual, to the employee, has to be based on, I am being treated different, I am in a hostile work environment because of my age. Things are being said about me that is keeping me from doing my job well because of my age, because of my religion, because of my sex, because of my gender, because of my national origin. Okay, for it to be legal hostile work environment. Okay, this is happening to me because of my protected class. Okay, council, you can create a hostile work environment for an employee if you are crossing the line and going directly to staff. Uh, this happens when we have city councillors in a city council meeting, in a workshop, complain about staff. Okay, um, where they want to direct the traffic, okay, about a department, or they don't like what a department head is doing, and they want to make sure that gets known. And so they blurt that out in a council meeting or workshop. Okay, it's crossing the line. Now, what you might tell the city manager is, I have a concern about something, blah, blah, blah. That's up to the city manager then to tackle that. Okay, so you don't get to direct traffic at the city council level. Goes to the city manager, and the city manager will take a look at that. Okay, yeah, professional conduct, I like to say this is everything that we learned in kindergarten. I'll play well in the sandbox. You know, back, back in those days when we teach our children, you know, to play nice and be respectful, and then we all grow up. And we learn those very simple, simple rules that we all learned as children, uh, which is, which is to play nice. So the goal, of course, of our work environment starts and ends with our employees. Starts and ends with the culture that we create. And every single day that we come to work, we bring ourselves to work, we bring our biases, we bring our pros and our cons, and how we view the world, and we bring ourselves to work. And so every day, we create our work environment. You know, I, I hear people say, oh, we put the goals up on, we have a mission statement, we put all these things up on our walls, and that's all great. But that doesn't create your culture. What creates our culture is what we say and do every single day. Who we act with, who we interact with, what are we talking about? Right, that's how we create our culture. So a good culture starts and ends every single day with what our employees care about, they care about, being able to come to work and work in an environment that's free from harassment, discrimination, and retaliation. That's what we want, that's how we get our job done. Right, that's what we want. That's what we all want. So, next slide, I think it's just my contact information. Again, you've got the Cliff Notes version, Steph gets to our version tomorrow. We go into much more depth. So with that, because I know you have a lot on, on your agenda, is there anything I did not cover? Or something I covered that you have questions you'd like me to go a little bit deeper? Because again, you've got the high-level version. That you would like to ask, or if you said, boy, I really wish you would have covered X. She didn't at all, she missed it?
Counselors, are there any specific questions that you had for her, or wanted her expand on any, um, any examples?
Anything confusing? Probably some stuff you don't like, I always get that. Again, it's where we sit, it's what our experience in life are, it's our views. I know for some people, some of the content is like, oh, it just went right past me. And now there's all this stuff that I have to remember, if I'm going to be a manager, or if I'm going to be a, a public employee, or a public official, there's just so much. Ah, but it all ends up with just being respectful, really. Yeah, and then saying, hey, if somebody says, are you aware of what you just said? No, what did I say? Well, you said this, I didn't realize that. I didn't realize that that was being taken in a negative way. And, or, we're just people. So we just help each other. But then be open to that, right? Being, being open to that, that's going to help.
I think it's important to, you know, understand when you're elected, it, things change.
Yeah.
And the things that you could do as a private citizen, um, it's different now when you're in an elected position. Um, because of that, as you mentioned, like the position, um, whether it's power, perceived power, um, and then who you contact and the relationship. So that might be the, probably what this deepest learning curve is.
I had a mayor once, who, um, was very grumpy with a, uh, it was a member of the police department, and, well, it was in the days where you actually went around and put tickets on windows for, for parking. And, uh, the mayor just hated the fact that his car was getting tickets. And he's like, I shouldn't get a ticket, I'm the mayor, you know, I should be able to park where I want to park. And so he went to the police chief, and he wanted that employee fired. Number one, it was a female, and number two, she's putting tickets on my car, and I want all those removed. It was like, and the poor police chief was like, no, no. You know, but again, we forget sometimes our hat, you know? And, you know, we run for public office, because we want to do good for our public. But then we have to remember sometimes, if, if we are letting that get in front of us, and if that's, you know, if we've crossed the line with what we're saying and doing, and we just have to refocus and take our step back and remember.
I know that, you know, in the last year or so, we've been, I mean, we have plexiglass between us. And so it's different, um, but, uh, whether, I, I'm a very extroverted person, the way that I talk, and I'm a leaner inner, um, I like to get close, and, um, will reach out and touch people on the shoulder. And that is, again, knowing what the role is, the interaction that I have now in my position is different. And so the way that I interact with some of my friends, I need to have a self-check, and I don't know if that's something that you can, any advice on that?
Yes, yes, oh, in the staff version, we talk about that. You know, what's red light, yellow light, green light to all of us? And so I ask in the staff version, giving somebody a hug on a bad day, you know, is that okay? And all my huggers are like, yes, you know, and I'm like, hmm. Well, you might be a hugger, I'm a hugger, I'm a green light person. I'm like, I want to make people feel better, you know? And so if somebody's having a bad day, you know, can I give you a hug? And if they say, okay, then, professional, we call it one-one-thousand, and that's it. Okay?
Okay, so it is okay, you can ask.
We ask, can I give you a hug? And if they're like, okay, one-one-thousand, it's just kind of a, a grace like this, we leave two-two-thousand, three-three-thousand for family, right? No, no, if, if they're releasing, you're releasing, you gotta bring them in, right? We don't go there, okay? If they say no, it's no. So again, for the huggers, it's all about us. We think somebody needs our hug, because then you will feel so much better. If somebody's like, no, then we don't touch them. Here's the things as huggers do, we didn't want to pat you on the hand, or pat you on the shoulder. We still want to make bodily contact, and they don't want to be touched. Or maybe they want to be touched by you. For some people, that's, you know, it's kind of, ew, 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 I'm like, boss, hug me, or I don't want that person hugging me, right? So it's about the receiver. We need to ask, but again, it's so, for the hugger, they just think that it's okay, because that's what's comfortable for them. And touching them might not be okay.
I even find, you know, like, all the things that are post-COVID, um, asking permission to shake hands, and, you know, is there any, any suggestions on like, that are like, are we elbow-biting? Or like, are we elbow bumping? Or because it is part of our culture that got like immediately stopped. And it'll be interesting to see how that's reintroduced.
That's really interesting. At C I S, we were in a team meeting, my team. And we were talking about this thing, about how handshakes have been part of our society. It meant professionalism, you know, for years and years and years. And now everybody like, are we going to keep elbow bumping for the rest? And some people are like, no, I just think it's going to go away. Some people are saying, just come in a room and say hello, and you won't, even doing this thing, that we won't go back to handshaking. Um, which again, is going to be very hard for some people because it has been such part of who we are, especially professionalism. You come in, firm handshake, right? We all taught firm handshake. Wow, I don't know if we're ever going to go back to handshake. So you're right, this whole COVID thing has altered how we relate to people, how we communicate to people, how close we get to people. Okay? And now we've been told to stand away. Get back. And it's, it's really affecting people's, uh, communication style. So then I think some people are like, once the masks come off, once the six feet, I'm going to get right back in there. And some people might be saying, hey, I, I still, I still want you backing up. Definitely has affected how we communicate. And for some people, it's hard. Again, you get that people wants to be close. That's how they communicate. So it's tough.
Well, before we move on, was there any other questions or clarifications while we have Sharon here? And so the best way, what we see, I have your contact information. But again, we talked a lot about protocols and information. Is it still running things through the city administrator and the, um, our city attorney? Or what is the best way if we have some questions?
Sure. So if you have a question about this content, um, you know, I, this is for you. And, and so I think it's okay if you contact me directly. Now, if you contact me about your own scenario, I'm going to say, oh, we need to go back through this process. If you're just saying, could you explain this a little bit more to me? I'm happy to explain more about this context. Okay? But if you want to ask me to see if you have a scenario or this habit, I'm going to direct you right back through, through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Well, we really appreciate your time and, um, all the things that you do for the cities.
Yeah.
And, um, if there isn't any further questions, then I think we'll move on on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Enjoy your time while you're here.
Yes, yeah. We're going to do this with staff tomorrow. Woo-hoo.
Okay. All right, so we have some other business to take care of. The next item on the agenda tonight is to review the city council agenda for June 20 seconds. We should have, uh, two, let's see, we'll start with, we have the urban renewal agenda, but then we also have the chemicals packet. And, uh, Mr. City Administrator, do you want to walk us through that?
Yes. I'm waiting for a word as to what we move up, but apparently nothing yet. So we'll start going down the process here. Um, the first is ceremonial. Uh, we have staff recognitions. Um, we've listed out the years of service and the individuals. And so from there, we'll move on to the consent calendar. You have the minutes from the May 25th and the June 8th in your packet. Is there any corrections regarding that? Yes, please.
Uh, yes, I have a concern on page, uh, would be on page one of the minutes, page four of the packet. Under public comments, uh, it just states Natalie Ranker, Fort, Forteen Simpson submitted her written comments to be read into the record. And there is no record, uh, here of her comments. And I don't understand why her comments are not shown here because that's the intent, as I understand it, for public comment.
Um, actually, um,
And it's always been done that way in the past.
Correct. And I appreciate the comment of always been done in the past. But I also appreciate that staff is aggressively getting training and certifications. So we'll ask our city recorder if you will address your training and the, uh, recommendations of, uh, the certifications.
There were several things that came up in the Northwest Clerks Institute training this year. One was absolutely only action minutes. And that, again, it records what is done, not what is said. And then comments, both public comments and council comments should not be included in the minutes as those are not what was done.
Okay.
And I can provide backup documentation on that.
Okay. Now that's clear. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not hearing that book clearly. I'm sorry.
Um, do you need a listening device?
All right, so.
So what, what, can you reiterate that just a little bit louder there, Kaylee?
I will. Excuse me. We're going to ask, so during Northwest Clerks Institute training over the past two weeks, one of the things that was driven home in, in multiple trainings was that minutes should absolutely be action only. So only what is done in the meeting, not what is said. That public comments should note who is spoken, but not what they said. And that goes for both public comment and council comments. So, and I can provide backup documentation on that if desired.
Okay, and now to change, uh, the state level?
This is a change, the state does recommend action-only minutes, uh, as does the LOC. But the specificity is at the municipal clerk level for I I M C, which is the International Institute of Municipal Clerks.
All right. It, it, I think would require, uh, different, uh, verbiage than at the council or this citizen comment part of our website. Because people's expectations are when they speak on Tuesday that it goes into the record. And if it's not going to be there, then that needs to correct it and kind of convey that to the public.
Their, their comments do get included in the record, which the official record is a copy of the minutes and all comments submitted and all documents from that meeting that are part of the official record that is stored.
Okay.
Including their recordings.
The other comment I had was that, um, on, on page six, uh, Counselor Gleason reported on the Parks Advisory Committee meeting. And my question is, I guess I don't understand then where the Parks Advisory Committee meeting notes or record or minutes are kept at all. Because I looked at, I have the last, um, Parks Advisory Committee meeting agenda, and there's nothing there that says anything about minutes. And it was my understanding, we went through this last spring with regard to, uh, discussions at the Parks, it was the board then, discussions about the Simpson tree removal. And it was acknowledged that after a public records request was submitted, it was acknowledged by the city that there were no records of any meetings for the past two years and no records of votes.
So I may interrupt you for just a second here. Is the, is your question about committee, is your question about the minutes?
The question is, where is the report that is supposed to be kept? The, the junior, the, the subcommittee goings-ons are supposed to be logged with the meeting minutes of the larger body, which would be the council meeting.
So I'm going to lean in here to our city attorney. If you can help clarify, we're talking, so it sounds like we're talking about Parks Committee notes, which we're not required to keep any.
I do not, I cannot think of anything that states that the record, there, that there are records required to be kept for the committees at all. I'm pretty sure we record them or something, but I'm not sure where, where it would have said that they have to be attached to the record or the minutes. I, I don't think I've seen that. I can definitely check it out for you. Um, where, do you know where it is? I can.
I can, I can, it's, it's a state law, it's, it's a, um, case law established. And the particular case was a subcommittee to a school board. And the ruling was that, no, the subcommittee did not have to keep their own separate meeting minutes. Yes, everything that happened there had to be reported back and logged in with the meeting minutes for the larger body, i.e. the school board.
Okay, I'll see what I can find on that, and I'll come back and let you guys know what I find out.
Thank you, Ms. Dubbins. Okay? Any other questions about the, let's see, so we're on, um, consent calendar and minutes.
So the question, uh, that we were supposed to counsel is if there's any objections to leaving that on consent, uh, calendar. Otherwise, if there's an objection by one or more council members, then it goes to an individual. You know, but the process is still the same.
Yeah.
All good? Nervous?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not good with it. I think it should be held off, the consent calendar, to get a result.
Uh, so we'll just simply move it out to a separate item, and it'll be the will of the council to take it as an action item of that. So we'll remove it from the consent yet, uh, calendar, and it'll be a standalone item.
Thank you.
All right. Moving down to, uh, we have our finance director, um, online. And, uh, there is also about a mayor, a public hearing for the supplemental budget for fiscal year '21, which is on page 10 in your packets.
Okay.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so the first hearing for tomorrow evening, uh, is to review the supplemental budget for fiscal year '21. Um, and in accordance to Oregon local budget law, we must hold a public hearing in order to receive any public input on the matter. Uh, the proposed changes affect five funds. Those being the general fund, the equipment construction fund, transient room tax fund, the PERS reserve fund, and the new CSL F R S fund. Um, total adjustments, uh, proposed are just under $5 million at 4.912, bringing the current fiscal year '21 budget to $34,789,705. Um, so what's going to be asked of council tomorrow will be, again, to hold a public hearing, listening to all public input, receive testimony, and then, um, adopt a resolution, resolution 3305, amending the current fiscal year '21 budget. And that resolution is attached, uh, and further details the exact changes. Um, so you'll be able to see the current appropriations, the proposed change, and the new appropriation on that resolution.
Any questions for Jessica on that? Or, um, finance director? Okay?
Uh, Mayor, that takes care of six and seven. Uh, we'll have your finance director move on to number eight, uh, which is the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds for fiscal year '22, uh, and which is followed by a resolution. So she'll discuss number eight and nine.
So the second hearing, again, is, uh, uh, city administrator mentioned for, um, accepting, uh, the state revenue sharing funds for fiscal year '22, and also receiving comment on how to use those funds. Um, so according to O R S 221.770, cities are required, uh, to pass a resolution annually in order to receive those funds. So first, uh, the budget committee, um, had to elect to receive funds and discuss the, the use of those funds. That occurred on June 2nd. And the committee unanimously voted to receive state revenue sharing for fiscal year '22, as well as proposed that $9,500 of that be used for community grants. And that list is attached of, um, uh, grant applications that were received. Uh, so tomorrow night will be the second hearing, which is a requirement of state law, uh, to do the same. So council will consider electing to receive state revenue sharings, and again, consider the use of those funds. And so staff is recommending, uh, we hold the hearing, listen to public input, and then adopt resolution 3306, which is to elect to receive state revenue sharing funds and allocating $9,500 to community grants.
Okay, and thank you, Jessica. I know the budget committee had some discussion about this. And in our packet, it is listed of the amounts that, um, the nonprofit organizations have requested. But at this point, the budget committee had elected to receive the funds, correct?
Correct.
Tomorrow night, we would just be adopting that, yes, we are still going to continue to receive these funds, but we are not 100% deciding who's getting the funds at this point, correct? We're just considering these.
Correct. So you won't award any grants, but you will be, as the second part of this, um, acknowledging that $9,500 is budgeted to be awarded at a future date and time towards community grants.
I just didn't want any counselors to get caught off guard there what the task was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there any other, um, questions? Or do we go ahead and we've got, we can move on to the next, um, item?
Okay, so you know questions? Uh, the next items also, uh, under the purview of the finance director. You have a public hearing for your adoption of your fiscal year '22 City of North Bend budget. And also, uh, the actual adoption of the fiscal year '22 City of North Bend budget. It's a requirement of the council to adopt this budget no later than midnight on June 30th, which would go into effect July 1st. Um, Ms. Tara, you've got the floor.
Okay. So, um, as you're all aware, on June 2nd and June 3rd, the City of North Bend Budget Committee met to review and receive input on the proposed fiscal year '22 budget. Uh, at that meeting, no input, public input was received. And the budget committee approved the fiscal year '22 budget in the amount of $36,424,948. Um, the committee also voted to approve the general tax rate of 6.1831 and the pool local option levy rate of .56 per thousand of assessed value. So now at this point, um, in accordance with local budget law, the governing body must review the budget document, receive public input, and adopt the budget, as the city administrator just mentioned, before June 30th. So tomorrow night, we'll hold a hearing for this purpose. And so staff is recommending we hold the public hearing, listen to any testimony. And then it is the council's, um, decision to approve as the budget committee has proposed, or make changes, um, but adopt the fiscal year '22 budget in the amount of $36,424,948, making appropriations, and also approving those tax rates, the 6.1831 general tax rate and the .56 local option levy.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else that we needed from our finance director this evening?
Um, she's got quite a bit more, but, um, if there's any discussion, anything, obviously, there'll be a public hearing and the actual adoption process tomorrow. The, uh, number 12 is a professional services agreement with Casell, which is our financial ERP system. So our finance director will, uh, take lead on this. Ms. Tara?
Okay, one moment while I change the page here. Um, so this is requesting a not-to-exceed, um, amount on a professional service agreement with Casell, which is our financial software. Um, as I mentioned in the budget committee meeting, that finance and admin, the major changes to our budgets were associated with training costs. So one of the bigger costs that we have planned for this year is to actually have Casell come out on site and help, um, assist the three out of four new, um, new or new to their position staff in better understanding the software, making sure that we're utilizing it properly. Um, and so this would be a training on H R, um, payroll, accounts payable, as well as the general ledger modules. And they would come out shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year, uh, July 12th through 13th. And this is an estimated cost, so I'm requesting a not-to-exceed of $10,000. Um, the only cost at this point that we know for sure is the $4,000 for them to come out and train for two days. Um, and those others are estimated. So requesting a, a not-to-exceed of $10,000 in expenditures associated with the Casell training and, uh, asking that the city administrator do the sign-on on that contract.
Okay. Well, this definitely goes with one of our goals as far as making sure that we are using, being efficient at city hall and staff services and, um, fits with what we want to do.
One other question is, are the costs going to be actual costs? Are they going to provide those costs to us?
Um, absolutely, yes. The counselor had asked if they would be actual costs and send us an invoice. Very much like when we did the League of Cities Training, if you recall, there was a contract amount. But then they actually had to send us an actual bill. So the amount was actually less than we anticipated. But we always have to get authorization over a certain amount. So we ask for not-to-exceed for that purposes in order to reimburse actual costs.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. All right. Um, question at this point, uh, Ms. Tara, how are you on time? Do we have to ask the council to move over to the U R A budget? Are you still fine?
I have about thirty minutes left here. Um, and I would like to request that we move, remove item sixteen from this evening. That was another one of my items as well.
Okay. So it's the will of the council. If you want, uh, Ms. Tara is remote. She's got a consensus because she's got to get on the plane. So it's, uh, up to you. If you want to, um, briefly move over to the U R A. The meetings were advertised at the same time, so we can, um, legally recess this one and open the new one.
We are a joint work session. We can.
Great. Thank you.
So since we're in joint and we don't even need to officially recess, I'm happy to transition and move over to U R A. Is there anything specific that I need to say to say that we're officially moving over to U R A or just can I?
I think you just did it.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, on our, our U R A, um, our joint North Bend city council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency work session, uh, here on Monday twenty-first, we're jumping into this U R A part of the meeting. Um, so.
So, uh, madam mayor, um, uh, obviously, um, for the regular meeting, there'll be the, um, approval agenda, the public comments. But Ms. Tara, our finance director will speak on items four and five. Um, this is the public hearing for adoption of the fiscal twenty-two North Bend Urban Renewal Agency budget, as well as, uh, resolution that goes with that. Um, Ms. Tara, you have the floor.
Thank you. Similar to the city of North Bend budget committee, um, the urban renewal agency budget committee met on June third to review the fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget. At that meeting, no public input was received and the budget committee approved the fiscal year twenty-two budget in the amount of three point one-one million. Uh, the committee also voted to approve the tax rate at the highest amount allowable. So now in accordance with Oregon budget law, the governing body, the urban renewal agency, uh, must review and adopt the budget in a public hearing setting. So again, the public hearing is intended to receive public input and then the agency, uh, will need to adopt the budget either as presented or amended. Um, however, staff is recommending approving the U R A resolution fifty-nine, which adopts fiscal year twenty-two budget in the amount of three point one-one million, making appropriations as listed in that resolution and approving the tax rate at the highest amount allowable.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We can incur.
Okay. Thank you. Um, at this time, um, we will move on to, uh, number six. Um, our, um, city recorder slash H R manager will, uh, go ahead and present that if you will. This is the purchase of tables and chairs for downtown spaces. It's page seven in your U R A packet.
Here.
All right. As is noted in your packet, uh, we are looking for approval for purchasing power, um, to purchase tables and trash receptacles for downtown spaces, outdoor spaces, so that they can become more utilized. Possible include, locations include Harbor Avenue, California Boat Ramp, Grant Circle and Lincoln Square. Uh, there are two quotes inclu- included, one from Uline and Global Industries due to supply issues and, uh, lead times on things. And price escalation, we're just looking for a, a not to exceed amount so that these items can be purchased from various suppliers, depending on who can get us what we need and get it here.
Okay. Yes. This is something that I know that, um, several of the businesses in the area, downtown area are also looking forward to try to encourage continuing to use outdoor spaces and to create a vibrant downtown area. Again, fits within our goals of the things that we want to do. Is there any questions about?
It's totally, sorry, it's totally amazing to me how many people use that boardwalk. I, I spent, you know, I, I might as well live down there. I work a lot, but anyway, there, there is a lot of people that use the, the whole boardwalk that, you know, and we're coming on to salmon season here in a few months and it'd be a really nice touch, so.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you. Um, other than that, on the agenda will be the executive director's report and any other business. I don't think I anticipate any other business. Um, so that would conclude that agenda and that'll mayor put us back to, uh, the council agenda.
All right.
Ms. Tara, um, thank you. You're more than welcome to hang out or, um, enjoy the friendly skies.
Thank you.
So we will leave the, um, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency, uh, work session, going over the agenda and go back into the North Bend City Council regular or joint session meeting. And I believe that left us on, let's see, we are, we are still going through the, um, agenda for tomorrow night.
Yeah, madam mayor, you'll be on number thirteen.
Thirteen.
This will be an agreement with the Portland State University for Parks Master Plan intern and we will ask our public works director, our Ralph Dunham, to come up and present that to the council.
As you're aware, um, we originally applied for a rare grant person, which is eleven months. We were not given a rare person. However, P S U, these are graduate students. P S U also has, well, they have two programs. This is their shorter program, ten and a half weeks. We interviewed six of the graduate students. They have, uh, all had various skills. However, a gentleman, first name's Calvin, I can't remember his last name right now, came out on top and we worked with agreement through the city attorney with P S U. We added a few things to the agreement on work product ownership and, uh, confidential information requirements. But at this point, we have an agreement which the legal opinion and our opinion thinks works for the city. So we, uh, will be asking you to authorize, signing of the agreement. Actually, Chelsea will probably sign it, I think is the way it's said, uh, to authorize the signature of the agreement to hire a graduate student to perform the basics or the background of the Parks Master Plan. We can't get it done in ten weeks, just so you're aware, because there'll be some public hearings, but they'll be putting out surveys and that type of thing. The whole process we anticipate will take five to six months. But the meat of the document is what this intern is anticipated to produce.
Okay. So the, so the program will, um, do they subsidize their pay? I see, so the request from us is the ten thousand plus additional.
Ten thousand two hundred, which basically covers their cost. Uh, they employ them.
Okay.
Um, we are not an employer. They employ them. Um, so they're a contractor for all intensive purposes. They consult contracts, so.
And then the person, once they come aboard, they would work directly with you?
Work directly with Chelsea primarily and myself, but primarily through Chelsea.
And you, you've identified the candidate. If all goes smoothly, when do you think they would begin, be able to begin to work?
Proving it, once you approve the budget, because it's budgeted for next year, uh, we anticipate June or July sixth as a start date. They were, work remotely partially, um, set up to, which we've all got better at, but, uh, work partially remotely and anticipate them being down here only about a week actually to do so.
Okay.
Site reviews.
Sounds like a good program. Are there any questions from the councilors?
I just had one on the, on the, what's the budgeting and fiscal impact plus additional in-house related expenditures? Do we know roughly what that will be?
We budgeted, I think, just over fourteen thousand. We anticipate mailing out some surveys and getting public comment and that's the rest of the cost is not, um, not so much expenditures for things other, but, and I discussed it originally with Haley a little bit to see what their cost was to get public input for when they did their library, um, public input process, so.
So that is the, that additional with budget of the quarter.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Yes.
That's all I wanted.
In fiscal year twenty-two.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Scheduled to be adopted tomorrow night. All right. Thank you.
All right. The next item will also, um, require our public works director. This is a negotiated contract with West Coast contractors for pump station number eight. This is a, um, unusual and different approach and our public works director, um, will detail the anomalies and why this approach. Mr. Dunham?
We purchased, huh, equipment to replace, to rebuild pump station eight, which is one of our smaller pump stations. It's actually on the Mill Casino site in very early two thousand nineteen. Yeah, a long time. The intent was city staff was going to do the majority of the work. I actually drew plans up, labeled this done by the city, that done by the city. And we received those materials, I believe, in about April of two thousand nineteen. I think we authorized a purchase in January. We now have equipment that's electronics, um, that's been sitting around for just under three years, two and a half years. In the interim, we tried to get bids on, uh, some electrical work and mechanical contracting. And the amount of work the city wasn't doing was so small, we just, people weren't willing to quote it. There was no money in it for them, to be honest, because of the amount of work we had cut down and the amount of time staff actually had, their wastewater staff. That project would have taken them a couple of months of their summer. So this got put off till this date. What happens now with pumps that we purchased in two thousand nineteen, they've all been stored in dry storage at the wastewater treatment plant. Piping, the control panel, some other miscellaneous equipment is if we put this out as a bid process, we changed the way we wanted to deal with it. We'll put a lot more work on the contractor, which is primarily, uh, demolition of the existing slab, pouring a new slab, moving the structure and adding some walls, um, installing the, the piping and mechanical equipment and installing the electric equipment. If we put it out to bid as is right now, you'd have a lot of risk on this equipment that the city's had in their possession for two and a half years, whether it's going to work or not. It's out of warranty. There's one year warranty from delivery. So in discussing it and trying to figure out how to bid this, it just, the more risk there is on the contractor, the more you pay, more you pay, um, you know. So this isn't a large project. We looked at, uh, who did pump station seven, which is a contractor out of Roseburg. West Coast contractors regularly does similar projects, uh, around town. And I looked at what the local contractors around town who had the most skill set, that, uh, kind of the industrial building, the equipment installation projects. And I selected West Coast contractors out of the, and I don't do a lot of business with them. I don't know anybody. I know people that work there, but I don't, uh, if Don Thompson was still in business, I would have suggested Don Thompson, but.
Well, questions, Ralph, would, i- is this going to open them up to thinking about, you know, bidding on some of our bigger wastewater proj- I mean, it's kind of out of their scope, uh.
They do pumps and could, they've done a lot, you know, like the tide gates in, uh, which mechanical equipment, uh, and similar projects. They've done a lot of work for the port. I know the new ice plant, those type of projects, the more industrial equipment piping type project, and they do the concrete work themselves and they have a pipe fitter crew actually themselves. That was just my suggestion. It does not have to be West Coast contractors. It, it's just my opinion. They were the best fit for this particular project. It does, you know, goes on any contractor's resume. I mean, I've had Benny Hempstead constructions done pump stations before he's out of business, but, uh, J B S, they're out of business. Johnson Rock has, uh, it's really not. This is a, the meat of this, the biggest part of this project is pouring a new concrete slab and replacing the utilities, which is more not the builder end, more the industrial contractor end, so.
Well, I guess what I, my point was hopefully maybe they'll say, whoa, man, maybe we can, maybe we can start bidding on some of these, you know, sewer pump stations, which I, I, I follow this stuff pretty close and, and don't remember them doing. I, I, this might be a, a good thing down the road, so.
So tomorrow night you'd be looking for authorization to enter into that negotiation.
In our agreement with a not to exceed of sixty-five thousand, um, I tried to get an estimate from them before this meeting. That's what we had budgeted for it to bid originally. Um, if it goes over that, obviously we'll come back to you, but, um, they're a long-term, well-known contractor in the area and if we're going to negotiate a contract with, with a contractor, I want to deal with somebody that both is local and they're going to be here for a while and, uh, and are known for doing professional, good work, so.
Is that? Like, maybe I'm just, I, I need to ask this question. I don't know, not quite how to put it, but aren't we required to get bids under normal?
If it's over, uh, you can do, there's all kinds of public process. You know, the airport just build a five and a half million dollar terminal building by selecting, uh, a design build contractor. I mean, they went through R F P process. Don't get me wrong.
Sure. I'm just asking a question because I'm not sure.
If it's over a hundred thousand, we have to go through some process. Under a hundred thousand, we don't. You can select, uh, you could hire an engineer for ninety-nine thousand dollars to design you something without going through any kind of process. Well, it's one fifty, but if your estimate's over a hundred, you have to.
Continue.
Yeah, I was, I, I've just never, I've never been.
Yeah, but I think it's all, but special, special circumstances. I mean, the equipment's been sitting there for three years. And you have to get somebody that's going to work with you to say, okay, I'll put it in. There are guarantees the equipment's going to work, but.
Yeah. The theory is we'll have them test it, make it, make sure everything's working, but we'll put it in their possession. So once it's in their possession, they test it.
No, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure about the process.
And the concern was, you know, realistically, and when you look at the risk, uh, they go in and they put the control panel in and they put the, we pull out the old pumps, within four hours, put the new pumps back, connect them up and go click.
Right.
Click, 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 click.
Have some five gallon bucket handy.
Just for your, um, you're not entirely wrong, but, uh, there's also language in there, uh, when you're in the lower, especially when you're in the lower amounts, uh, there's language in the law that basically says if you don't have contractors available, as long as you made the effort to try to get a few bids.
That's, that's where I was going with it. I didn't know if that's, like, you know, I just didn't know if this is going to open some kind of can of worms to where, well, I never got a chance to bid on it.
I think he did his job.
Okay.
Keeping us on track because we do, do we have to vacate by seven P M?
Uh, yeah, vacate by seven P M. Um, I do appreciate the councilor's comments because, from transparency and the public view. When we're deviating from our normal process on bidding.
Yeah.
And so that's why I wanted to introduce this as special circumstances and it is. And we want to be transparent to the public that this equipment has been sitting there and it'd be no different if, you know, councillor Gleason was in the automotive business and I brought him an engine that I bought three years ago and said, put it in and guarantee it, get it running. There's a transfer of risk. So there's, there's shared responsibility there. At the same point, um, I feel confident in, in my discussions with the public works director that he's done his due diligence and, um, uh, ready to bring this forward to the council.
And this would be a cost savings. We anticipate a cost savings over bidding because the risk is relatively significant.
It was just different way to do it.
Absolutely. So great question and, and I, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ralph, for the details on that.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's, uh, two other things for the agenda tonight, because I think she said that email licensing renewal was going to be removed.
That's correct. So you have number fifteen on here. Um, uh, we have, uh, discussed this in your budget process. Um, this is a budgeted item, but there is a contract agreement. agreement that we'll have to execute. So what you have here is you have the proposal from the Coos Bay North Bend Visitor Center, and that proposal is there embedded. So what we're going to do is, you'll have the opportunity to adopt your budget, that then will go to this proposal, where you would authorize your city administrator to work through with Coos Bay North Bend Visitor Convention Center and our city attorney hammer out the agreement, get it executed. The city of Coos Bay's already provided us a copy of their existing agreement, and I'm sure that they'll probably mirror, and what we would be contracting for is very specific services, which you see outlined, and it's for that budget money. For the purpose of the public, that money comes from our tourism tax, heads and beds, so that's actually what would be paid in these services. Moreover, this is going to be departmentalized, so although we're contracting with Coos Bay North Bend Visitor Center to provide services, we'll have a separate accounting altogether, and so when they come and make reports to us, they'll be talking about the services provided, but what you get is you get a kind of a scale and utilizes their staff and resources when it benefits all of us.
Okay, very good.
So if there's any questions, I'll probably answer them.
Okay. Is there any questions on the visitor information bureau contract? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go ahead, and we're going to strike 16 from tomorrow night, and then the last thing on the agenda will be the results of the city administrator's review. So we will be going into executive session after this meeting, and then we'll be able to make a statement on that tomorrow night.
All right, Madam Mayor, on your executive sessions, we have seven, eight, nine, and 10. We are striking number seven, there's nothing at this time. We will ask staff, with the exception of our public works director and our city attorney, to go ahead and vacate, and then we'll go into executive session, the city reporter will be here to facilitate, but we'll be doing number eight, nine, and 10.
Eight, nine, and 10 of executive sessions, okay.
Easy, then, Mr. ...
Um, I, yeah, so eight is...
Yep?
Okay, are we...
Can you read your script, please?
Okay, I'm going to read the script now, so, "The City of North Bend Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192-6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiation," well, eight, so we're skipping labor negotiations, to, okay, the governing body to carry on, sorry. So number, so we're just doing eight, to carry on, to conduct deliberations, am I, I'm so confused right now, Kaylee, we are, the executive session is for eight, nine, and 10?
Correct.
Okay, and so if I'm reading the script...
So you're going to read, "The city council will meet in executive session for 192.6602H to I."
Okay. Designate the governing body, okay, so 19, 196, I guess I'm just not seeing that in the script, 192-660?
Yes.
That one? Sorry, guys.
That's fine.
We're getting the highlighter here. Don't read the red here.
Just read the red.
Wait, so "The City of North Bend Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192-6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on," no, "to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties to the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed with ORS 192-66022I, to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing." And then the next paragraph. "The North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Board will also meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192-6602E to conduct deliberations with those persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in."